Time is now 6:36 on March 4th, 2024. For those that are attending tonight's meeting, you should be aware that the meeting is being audio and video recorded by AIPAC and ASRSD. Any audience members who wish to record any parts of the meeting must inform the chairperson, who will announce the recording. This is to comply with the Massachusetts Wiretap statute. The listings of matters are those responsibly anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. I will now call to order the regular session. Let us start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Constitution of the Republic, for which we stand hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Besnahan?
I'm here.
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 Mr. Roper?
Stan?
Here. Okay, now we have our student showcase.
Hi, everybody. My name is Desiree Figgly. I'm the Director of ASRSD's program. This is the cast of The Lightning Feast, the Percy Jackson musical, getting ready to perform the first weekend of April. We've got students from all grades who've been working since the end of December. They're going to perform for you the finale of our show. It sounds familiar, it's because it is based on a very popular young adult novel series by Rick Riordan, Percy Jackson. And I don't even know how many books there are at this point. But this tells the story of the first book, which follows Percy Jackson, played by Kazai Salter, who after a troubled school experience discovers that he is a half-blood, which means that he is one mortal parent and one godly parent, who he later learns is Poseidon, the god of the sea. And that takes Percy on a wild adventure that spans the length of our show. And at the end of the show, Percy realizes that the problems are only just getting started, and he needs to make a choice. And that is what he's talking about here in this song, backed up by our whole cast, who are also campers at Camp Half-Blood. Our production is music-directed by Michael Powderley, who's going to be running our sounds tonight. I think it should be fun. But if our sound is really off balance, we might pause and start again. So without further ado, here's Bring On The Monsters from The Lightning Feast.
Feeling ready?
Feeling stoked?
Feel dizzy?
We could fail, but we have to try.
Don't feel bad, because we're usually about to die.
Bring on the monsters, bring on the monsters, bring on the real world. Bring on the monsters, bring on the real world.
Thanks for having us. The show is at six and seven in the Bay Area, right here in Victoria. So please feel free to come and support them and all their hard work. Does anybody have any questions for any of our performers?
Oh, you guys look great.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It's great to have you here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's always one of my favorite parts.
You can go home now.
I know, right? Okay, so now we're going to move to public comment. Public comment, yes. Do we have anybody online? Michelle? No? All right. Do we have anyone in the room for public comment? No? Okay. One, two, three. All right. Okay, I'm going to move on to our consent agenda. So this is going to be the consent agenda's vote for our February... Ooh, what did I miss? Oh!
Sorry, girls.
See, I kept looking, and I kept wondering. I was like, I knew we had our representatives. Please forgive me, I'm so sorry, because you know I love that you guys come, and I was about to just throw you in after the consent agenda. So now we have our high school representatives, so I'm going to let you guys take it away.
Okay, long time to see. So we're just going to talk about what we've been up to. For me, still waiting on my decisions. I have eight left to receive. So it's just a waiting game at this point. My friends aren't hearing back, so I'm getting a little antsy. But yeah, let's see where everything goes with that.
I just had my first three college tours during February break. And so I toured University of Maryland, Howard University, and Hampton University. And I really liked all of them, but my top school is definitely Howard right now. And I can't wait to go to more schools.
I've been trying to work a lot. I'm in the middle of winter season and spring season, so I've been trying to get as many hours. I work at Pleasant Cafe. Can I see Mr. Pleasant there? I also work at The Millworks, and I do a softball clinic with little kids. So I've just been trying to make as much as I can for college and summer and stuff like that.
And then we're both starting softball season soon, so I'm really excited for that personally. I think I'm really excited, too.
Very exciting. We've been having campus practices. And the first one, we had five people, but this weekend we had like 20. It was awesome, and it was a great practice. And we're both really looking forward to that. So yeah, that's what we've been up to. Are there any questions or anything?
Do you know when your first game is, so we can try to make it? I'll look it up.
I'll let you know, definitely.
Maybe you had it in the back.
Beginning of April, for sure.
Beginning of April.
It comes fast.
Okay, so take me back. So you're waiting... Are you anxious?
Yes.
What, where? Okay. So where's your anxiousness lie?
Well, softball is also like coming into place, so I'm waiting to hear back from Wellesley. And if I get it in, I have a spot in the softball team. So I'm trying to figure out like what I want to prioritize, if I want to play, if I don't. And also just if I get into other schools that are also really high up on my list. So then I have to make that decision, like what do I want to do? So I'm anxious about hearing back and actually having to like pick.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. So one of the things that I learned really late in life that I'm going to suggest you do is go with the what-if. But when you do what-if, don't come at it with anxiety. Come at it with what's the worst-case scenario? Start there. Because honestly, if you can get over the fear and the anxiety of what you consider to be the worst situation, by the time it comes around, you're already going to have the plan off the top of your head. And in that way, you can enjoy yourself. I feel like it's one of those odd times where it's very bittersweet, where they'll say, "Oh, it's high school, it's the best." I mean, I wouldn't say that, but most people... Most people say that. So at least that way you get to enjoy the accomplishments that you have. But definitely do that. Remember, I think, who you are, because sometimes we forget that, and we forget to look at our accomplishments. And then all of a sudden, boom, it's like the day of graduation, and you kind of are overwhelmed with your feelings and can't be present. So start enjoying it now and recognize your accomplishments now, because you do have them. And anchor yourself, because there's a lot of new stuff coming at you, and I'd really love for you to enjoy yourself, especially where you're excited about softball. So even if you start there. But don't let that suck your joy out, because ultimately, you're a rock star anyway. So you just keep moving forward with that. And Nia, be on the lookout at Mohegan Sun every year. And I feel like it's around March or April. All the HBCUs go up to Mohegan Sun, and they play a game. They play for a championship that Chris Paul put together. And they have a little inner cup challenge, and it's pretty awesome. It's a three-day weekend. And you can go down and see them. So look at it, and they do the recruiting, and they have some more information. So if you want to travel and see some more of those schools, you'd be able to kind of do like a one-stop shopping. Anybody else? Yeah, true.
Unfortunately, I've had the... I'll give you the advice I've had to give three times in four years. Because I sat down with my kids this thing going off. As we looked at all the universities and all the majors and the rest of that, for what you applied to, you can't make a bad choice. It's not possible to do that. It's also not possible to know what the right fit is for you 100%. The only thing that you're committing to is your first semester at your first school. That's all you're doing, and in that major. And the only thing that's really important as you go to that first semester at your first school and your first major, is that you kill it. Now, you've both proven you have the ability to do well at things you like and even do all the things you don't like. So when you go to your first semester, you have to do very well at all of those things. Because if you do well at all of those things, you can go anywhere you want after that, because you're now a proven commodity. And you might find that... My three found schools that they loved, and it worked out great. But a lot of people find they don't like exactly where they are, or they're not that happy with the major or some other aspect. But if you do very well in your first semester, you get to pick your place. You're a proven commodity, and you will not have an option. So don't put... There's always some stress involved, but don't worry about it. Just try to see if you can get a higher batting average than Sweetie's.
Impossible. I don't think I can.
Just put it on the ground.
Anybody else? No?
Um, yeah, I don't think I've asked you this question. But so now that you've looked at some schools, I'm just interested, do you have kind of your own list of priorities? What was it about Howard that stood out to you?
So in their freshman dorms, they have a beauty salon in their freshman dorms, so that really...
I get you. I'm with you.
It really sold me there, because I was like, you know, I got to figure out where I'm going to get my hair done when I was there.
This is practicality.
Yeah, that was like, that was really, it was like, okay. Like, that has... It had a lot of resources. And I was like, that really sold me on that school. Because I was like, a beauty salon?
I'm with you. I learned the skill early, so I had some more choices, but I failed.
I don't necessarily.
They also do polishing, you know?
Best of luck to both of you. I'm sure you'll do great.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much. We appreciate you taking the time to come and see us. Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, now we get to the board and stuff. I was hoping we had a bright spot. No, it's all good. Okay, so we're going to get to the consent agenda vote, which is the February 14th, 2024, regular session minutes for release, and also the warrants, which we have listed, which I'm just going to read off the numbers, which is EP warrant 1130, 1131, payroll warrant 17, payroll warrant 17.1. And that is it. So at this time, we'll have any discussion, if there is any discussion. And otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve payroll warrants as presented.
Second? Okay. Oh, what about the consent agenda? Sorry, I mean, the minutes for release?
Oh.
Sorry about that.
Can I add that?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the session minutes for release, as well as payroll warrants as shown.
Second? Awesome. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Consent agenda passes.
Madam Chair, I'll abstain, because I wasn't here for the February 14th meeting.
Oh, I apologize for that, Joyce. Thank you for keeping me online. So Joyce abstained. Okay. Next, we're going to move on to new business, which first is the approval of the Air Shirley Regional School trip to Greece Islands in June 2025 with Mrs. Capasso. I can't say her first name, I'm sorry. She was my teacher, and I can't call her by her first name.
Thank you, Ms. Bean. I have probably said her last name. Thanks, Erica. Hello, I'm Lovely Capasso. I'm also known as Eleanor Capasso. You can have your choice of what to call me. I have been employed, for those of you who do not know me, this is my very first year in the district. Oh, by the way, my name didn't appear on that slide for a school presentation there. I am running, and have been running since about 2016, the Air Shirley Regional High School travels abroad. For those of you who don't know, our first trip was to Costa Rica, I believe, in 2017. Then we followed up with Italy, and then we followed up with Greece. The pandemic hit, and we canceled a trip to London, Paris, and Normandy. And we canceled a trip to the Amalfi Coast. So last year, with Mr. Christie and Dr. Rendez's permission, we began to pursue again, traveling abroad. We switched companies. We are now passports travel. And our first trip is taking off June 13th to Puerto Rico. We decided to keep the trip more local in case, gosh forbid, something pandemic hit again, and I could get the kids home to... From a country that was a territory, and we can get you home fast. We're branching out a little bit now. I would like our next trip in June of 2025 to be to Greece again. However, it's a little bit of a twist. Yes, we have traveled to Greece in the past. This will be a Grecian cruise. Now, not just a cruise, we're, you know, we do conga lines and things of that nature. I'm sure that does happen.
That's educational.
Huh?
That's educational.
Yeah.
It's called physical therapy.
No, no, good. We're, it's more, we are, we'll be going to the islands this time. So we will be traveling to, and I believe you may have something in your packet, to Parmos, Rhodes, Santorini, and Mithis. So more island to go. This is also probably our most expensive trip that I have ever taken with a kid, with roughly four, it's roughly $4,800. That includes everything except spending money. So that includes all your air, your transfers, your hotels, your meals, with the exception of maybe, you know, a gelato in between. Everything is included. So the price is rather high, I'm aware of that. But it is also, I believe, a seven-day cruise, or a six-day cruise, I'm sorry, a six-day cruise. And it would occur at the end of the school year, so students would not, maybe miss the last three days of school, depending. I know cruise ships depart only on Mondays. We would leave the Friday before school lets out and go from there. So I'm here seeking approval, and here to entertain any questions you may have concerning this tour. And yes, I do understand that the price is an issue. We do not do fundraising. That is up to the students themselves to take on that task by themselves. I always address that one first.
Any questions? Yep, Joyce?
How many students are you thinking of?
For this trip, I have to have three chaperones, because I have three chaperones for this one. But believe it or not, I got permission for the third chaperone through the agency, because I had enough travel points through the other company. They gave me the chaperone. For this one, I will not leave without three, because it's Europe. So I need three chaperones, which would roughly be 24 students, 24 travelers. Which is not, I mean, the price is, what's the iffy part? It's a lot of money. They do make payment plans. It's roughly $300 a month up until, I think, the February before we leave. It's a large investment. So my minimum this time is 24. And I've talked to the travel company, and I said, "We will cancel if I don't get 24 by X amount a day, and that's just the way it has to be." It's a safety issue for me.
When do you need that line?
When do I need the number? It depends on when we start rolling this out. It'll probably be about four months in. So if I begin, I have been advertising just for informational purposes, to see where the interest is. I have about 30 names. I'm assuming by June, I would make a final call. By June of this year.
June of this year.
The option was also floated, that this could possibly be a parent-also trip. But that's something we still have to sort of work around. It is a, I can't, that's $9,000 now. That's a lot of money. It's a scary amount of money.
For the trip, what's the criteria for the students that go?
I take anybody who wants to go. And we are including, with contracts signed, seniors who will have technically graduated the week before. They will sign a super-duper special contract stating that they follow all US rules.
Any other questions?
Rules are different in Europe.
They would know what that means.
Yes, we do.
Does this run through educational tours, Bill?
I'm sorry?
Is this operated through educational tours?
It is not through the same company. This is through passports. It is a separate company. After the last fun time we had, we are no longer able to use them.
We were on the receiving end of that in 2020. But you'll be happy to know that the US has created a US marching band with five students, I mean, eight students from each of the 50 states. And Darren's been selected. We're going over June 6th for the 80th anniversary of the D-Day landings. So we'll be doing our Normandy evening. Try to keep us...
I tried to get there. Yeah. Tried to get to Normandy. That was like 70, 75, 75th anniversary of Normandy. Unfortunately.
Yep. We'll be there, we'll send you.
Oh, that's wonderful. I'm glad, I'm glad. That's his trip of a lifetime, I'm certain.
So have any other... Anyone else? Yes, Joyce?
Oh, I think this is very interesting, because many times when you're on the ships, they will give lectures on what they're going to be seeing and what the history is, and what, you know, it's not just like, go.
No, this isn't just a cruise ship.
There's quite a bit here that is not listed here, I would think.
Passports, because they cater to a student audience, is first and foremost primarily educationally based. I know that from traveling prior, that kids come home with more language. I mean, Greek is not a very easy language to learn. But, you know, I know those who went with me, you know, we were saying kalimara and kalisara for days and days and days. Good morning and good evening. And even though it was an evening, they had to say it. But those kinds of, I mean, they just, it's the cultural exchange. You are immersed in the culture. You're immersed in the food. I've never had better yogurt than Greece.
Oh, Greek yogurt, huh?
Best Greek yogurt ever. The only, the closest place I've gone is Tarpon Springs in Florida, which is a Greek fishing village. Except for really good Greek food. Go to Tarpon Springs. But it's educationally based.
Yes.
No, it looks good.
I trust you.
Thank you.
I, I do. I was trying not to be educationally based at the back of your classroom, and you forced it. So I have firsthand knowledge that you will make sure. It is education.
Wow, thank you.
Yes. Absolutely. So we don't have anything else. I'll entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion that we approve Mrs. Capasso's proposal for Athens trip in June 14th, 2025, as described tonight.
Wait a second?
Second?
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Go ahead, have a look.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I will be back to probably ask for one more trip.
All right.
Next year. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Before, I apologize, I'm just signing off on this, everyone. Okay, I'm going to look to Dr. Rendez so that we can discuss the approval of the grants awarded.
Thank you. So we have four grants to make you aware of tonight that we have been awarded. Some of these are recent, and there was one that we got a few months ago that we're just bringing to the school committee now. The first is the Massachusetts Department of Public Health Behavioral Health Grant for $1,5,658. This grant is to support the behavioral health needs of students. It's a three-year grant from February 1st of this year through December 31st, 2026. This grant is really based on prevention, prevention of substance abuse, and also reducing the needs for students to be outside of their classroom. The way the grant puts it, it has reduced the need of timeout rooms, but it's really, what their aim is, is to keep students in class. So we're looking at this grant to use to provide supports for some of our students, so that we can provide for the need before there is a need to be removed from the classroom. The second is a DESI grant, Social Emotional Learning Grant, for $150,000. That is actually from January 19th of this year until June 30th of this year. So that is a good amount of money to spend before the end of the year. This could be used for looking at some of our Tier 1 social-emotional curriculums. We are also exploring and working with DESI to see if that can pay part of an Adjustment Council salary. We're still waiting on confirmation of that. That would allow us opportunities to use what we were using that funding for for something else. We've also been awarded a DESI IDEA Improvement Grant for $16,890. And this is to provide professional development for our special educators, who will be implementing a new IEP process beginning next year. who will be implementing a new IEP process beginning next year. And we are also awarded a grant of $15,000 through DESI. This is the Homeless Emergency Port Grant. This is for the migrant shelter that is currently in air. We received this money, I believe, a couple of months ago. And this is to support the educational needs of students residing in emergency shelters. That is a one-time grant. That is not the daily $104 a day funding that we have received one payment for and expect at least two more payments from DESI before the end of the year.
The SCL grant for what? Is there a way if you do some consulting, contract, prepay to be that? But the time period to spend that kind of money.
Yeah.
If you were able to negotiate a year or should we do a contract for support program existing in a pre-existing status, does that meet the requirements of the grant?
We can't prepay. Prepaying is not allowed. What we can, what we will be able to do is spend every single cent of this grant. There is a process to have this fund, something that we have already funded through our general fund. We just have to make sure that it is very clear where that money has gone and it was spent. It's, I believe the technical term is journaling over the money. I believe that's what it is. Please correct me if I'm wrong. I know we will, we will spend every cent of this grant, which will then possibly free up other funds to do things like you are suggesting. We just have to make sure that we follow the RFP to the T, which we will do. Jay Mooney, our grants director, is already in contact with DESI, asking if the easiest way to do this is to have it pay part of a salary because that would be a relatively big chunk of this. But it is, it's money that we need and will spend. And hopefully this will help alleviate some of the burden that we'll be carrying into next year.
Joyce, did you have something?
Okay. So on that first grant, and I'm going to ask a dumb question. I know the answer already, but I'm just hopeful. So that is not each year for three years, is it?
That is the total for the three years.
That's the total. So I need to divide that by three.
Essentially.
Doesn't sound like it comes out enough to open the door.
You know, it's actually, that's a, you know, 30, just over $30,000 a year is a nice, a nice amount of money to get for this type of work. It will be, it's, we're very happy we're receiving. And we are, we are receiving, we're writing many more grants and receiving more grants than we have in the past. Some of them at the higher price point, but we are applying for grants for anywhere from $5,000 to millions of dollars. So we are happy to take anything that we can get that can help, help our kids and teachers.
Well, first I want to say thank you for being fiscally responsible and applying for grants and making sure that we're getting what we need and trying every avenue before we even reach, you know, our towns, given the conversations that we have been having centering around providing the best atmosphere for our students. What I was wondering is, what does it look like when you're, and I'm not saying this is exactly what you're, you know, like your exact plan, but for the behavioral health grant, does it, according to the guidelines, could that be something centering around? For example, there's DBT skills that can be provided particularly at the elementary age. So for example, if you notice that particularly elementary age kids wear their emotions on their face very easily, they haven't learned yet, you know, how to hide them as well unless there's trauma involved. So typically what happens is if children can learn how to acquire DBT skills, which is you teach them an acronym, usually it could be anywhere from three to four letters. So for example, stop, right? So let's say a child is kind of getting spun up, they're anxious, not necessarily angry. What that helps them do is it's a skill to help them practice so that in the moment when they do get anxious, they can remember stop. And usually you have a stop sign in front of it and it means, hold on. I gotta remember another easy example. So it's stop. I can't remember T, observe, proceed. I can't remember what T is. T is obviously the important component that I'm not remembering right now. But in Tier One, given that you're having like a Tier One, it's kind of one of those things that for social emotional learning, it can assist them with staying in the class. It also assists the teacher to kind of have time to navigate between, maybe they're in the middle of teaching a, you know, lesson and they can't quite get to the kids. So is that something where maybe you provide a, I don't want to say curriculum because I think that's not the right verbiage for it, but either providing like PD for, you know, those educators that would implement that, or is it a different type of grant?
Well, that specifically, I'm not sure. I'd have to look into that. But first I would ask what the acronym DBT, because I'm drawing a blank here.
Diallectical Behavior Therapy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Louder please.
Diallectical Behavior Therapy.
Thank you.
Some of those strategies are being actually taught through our Tier One second step. And I believe possibly in Trails of Wellness, though I'm not as familiar with the curriculum. And that's some of the things that is, that are pre-taught for the, you remember the common corners that were implemented in most schools? So the common corners are places a student would take those strategies that they've been taught during those lessons and actually go to the common corner to utilize. Sometimes they can do that from their, from their seats, but the common corner would have some other devices there that could help them do this. I can find out for you whether or not this could be used for that. I don't know offhand. It was really more about class time and prevention from my understanding, but I have not reviewed that RFP in quite a while. So what I will do is have a conversation with Lorraine Wilson and Jay Mooney, our grant writer, and we'll get you that answer.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Appreciate that. Does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I just had a question on the homeless emergency support grant. Did they require you to like allocate that specifically to those students? Or are you just kind of putting it generally towards?
It did, yes. It had to be something that we were using that would help those students. And quite, what we use that for, that $15,000 was for Cockwheel? I think we presented on that. So Cockwheel is a virtual therapy service that we actually had qualified for a grant through the Department of Health. They pre-qualified us for $15,000 for the grant. The district would have to pay the other $15,000. And what that gives us is 50, 50 virtual counseling therapy slots for our students. We can get a, any student in the district, we can get into therapy in two days, which is insane timeframe right now. If you are looking for a, like a typical therapeutic service right now, you're looking at anywhere from six months to a year to get in. So it's a, it's a two-day turnaround. It is virtual. Some students prefer that, some don't. It really depends on the individual, but we are taking full advantage of that.
Okay.
So when we have a student, whether they're in that shelter or not, with a severe need, we do a referral, we get them in very quickly. Now oftentimes what happens, it's kind of a bridge. So they'll be in that until a slot opens up where they can be in person.
Okay.
But it's, it seems to be working great. I believe this is a grant that we are going to qualify for right away through the Department of Health again. So it was really kind of a no-brainer. It was, they were giving us $15,000. We need an additional 15 and, you know, we have kids from every school who are enrolled in this now.
Oh, that's great. For the, the grant writers, kind of a general question, is that person like actively just pursuing grants everywhere and then coming to you when they find them? Or how do you, how are you kind of searching? Because I do this all day at work. But I mean, there's so many different places you can look, so.
Yeah, it's both. So he's coming to us when he comes across something that we think, he thinks we may be interested in. We're also sending things to him because we have been bartered with opportunities through email and the commissioners' updates about things. What we're trying to do though is not, we're trying to be responsible. We don't want to change what our mission and vision is and chase the money. We're trying to find grants that are going to support what we are already doing or what we want to do. Not just saying, hey, this is a large chunk of money. Let's change the direction where we think we should go, chasing the grant wins, which I'm sure, doing what you do, you've heard that, I'm sure, before. Which is challenging because sometimes there could be a grant that we would probably get, but it would really kind of turn us in the direction we don't want to go. One of, you know, one that we did get that I wanted to make sure you had an invite was the Farm to Schools. We got that last year. We presented, but I think the smoothie machines are going to be up and running relatively soon. So we wanted to make sure we invite school committee to come try a smoothie. These are crazy machines. But yeah, it's a combination. I'm sorry, I got off track there for a moment. It's a combination of Mr. Mooney finding them and asking if we'd be interested and then us sending him grants, saying, we need, we need your assistance with this. For instance, I emailed him today. I need his assistance with the student opportunity act grant. The state completely overhauled how that is done. It was typically a 25, 30-minute grant for me to write. That's not the case any longer. It is a huge process for a very small amount of money for us. So, you know, Jay jumped right on it and he's getting that process started for us.
You have to prioritize.
Yeah, and to be clear, what we're going to be using that for, I think, moving forward is we are, we have used Effective School Solutions the last couple of years in the high school to meet some clinical needs of some of our neediest kids. It's been great. It's really worked. We, my first year here, we lost, I believe, 13 students either to transferring to an alt-high school or dropout. Last year, I believe it was one. And this year, it is still very, it was one, maybe two. And I think that the students who we've lost weren't even involved in that program. There are other factors. So it's worked really well. What we're doing this year, we took one clinical support from ESS. We hired internally to be the other clinical support. We're trying to model our internal program after ESS because we believe we can do this on our own and save, actually save a great deal of money for that. One of the things that we have done though in the recent weeks is we, ESS contacted us about a grant that we could apply for, that would allow us to hire them as consultants. So they, we could take a step back, it would be less money. It would be a grant that would pay for the services to hire them to consult the program that we're running internally, which would be great for a year as we really kind of work out the kinks on our own. So that's another way that we often get grants. People who could be recipients of that grant money contact us directly saying, hey, you should apply for this grant and we can work together. And in this case, it was kind of a no-brainer. If we could keep them on for consultants, we would love to. If money wasn't an issue, we would keep, we would just keep them on because it's been a great program. But it is, it is a very costly program. It was completely worth it. It really provided a need that our high school needed in the moment. But it is something that we, I think we can replicate and provide at a much better price point.
That's great. Thank you.
I was just curious, a quick question. What's the latest number of migrants, students, and in which schools? Do you know?
So the, there's 22 total enrolled. The majority of those students, I believe it's 15 at Page, four at the middle school, and three at the high school. Is that?
That's 22. Your math is right.
Charlie's going to double check my numbers. If that's not it exactly, it's very close to that.
While Charlie is checking, I do want to say I have had the opportunity to check in with the high school student families. And it's nice when I hear from the student that they feel welcomed. And they had a couple of, I wouldn't even say issues. I think it was just a matter of changing, right? So it's a lot of change for one kid. And I think it's a sophomore maybe, I believe. I don't think it was his freshman year. And the one thing that he kept saying was he was encouraged by the fact that he felt everyone around him really believed that he could do whatever it was that he was trying to navigate. So it was very uplifting to hear that because he didn't know me from anybody else. I just happened to say, hey, how are you doing? And, and that's what he said. So I haven't talked to any of the other families. But I did like hearing that from him. He was really encouraged and his mom told me he's doing well in school in that, you know, she's a lot less apprehensive than she initially was, kind of, you know, as a parent coming in with the what-if and such big changes. So that was encouraging to you.
So Rajan, we can't confirm those numbers right now, but what I can do is email the school committee tomorrow with those exact numbers.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be exact.
It's, Page Hilltop by far has the highest enrollment. There are many more than 22 students or school-aged children who are living at the shelter, but many of them choose to stay in their school of origin. So though they're living there, they can choose to be transported back to wherever they were attending school before. So we transport kids to Boston, Lawrence, Pittsburgh, Lowell, Lynn? Is Lynn on there?
I don't think so.
It's a multitude of places. We would prefer that they would choose to come to school with us.
Cost is still.
We are splitting that transportation cost with the school of origin, which is, it's expensive. We are, there is some reimbursement that we would get next year for that and it's about 80% of that is reimbursed.
The target is about 80%.
The target is 80%.
And does also the cost per student go to those school systems from Air Shirley?
No.
Where they're enrolled?
Yes.
We're not paying though.
The aid money would go.
Right, the $104 a day. Yes.
But no cost to us. I was at transportation.
Is there any conversation, like, do you guys reach out to them to see if they want to come next year so that we're prepared in case like all of them happen to be going to Page Hilltop and then all of a sudden, you know?
Yes, what we are trying to do is work with our McKinney-Vento liaison because typically what would happen is you want to provide that school of origin for a reasonable amount of time. Typically, that's the end of the school year. And then we would have the option to ask them to come, to come to school. We don't know currently if this is a different situation because of the migrant shelter status. So we're trying to find that out. But the, the mock, mock in the shelter, they have actually been tremendous to work with. They get back to us quickly, you know, except for some of the confusion about the transportation in the beginning. They've been, they've been great. So we will continue to work with that. Mr. Deppy's been in contact. Unfortunately, our McKinney-Vento liaison retired and we have, we were never assigned a new one. But Mr. Deppy was able to convince someone who does it to be our liaison. Yeah, it was, so we are getting answers, but not necessarily as fast as we did when we had someone just designated to us. So what we are, we are working on that to try to get people to make the decision to, to come to us.
Joyce, did you have a question?
So I guess we're all on the same point here. So you mentioned that the $15,000 grant could be used for like counseling. Is it also used like for Chromebooks and hotspots and it says educational needs?
The $15,000?
Yeah.
It could have been, absolutely, but we use.
It's what you can do with it.
We could have done anything we wanted to with that, that money, yeah, that $15,000. It was just a one-time, or one-time grant for districts who have a migrant shelter in their, in their district. And I think the name is unfortunate because it's not really a migrant shelter. Many of the students are just homeless. They've lived in Massachusetts for the majority of their life or other states. I think a lot of people, when they hear migrant, that they're thinking that these are people coming from outside of the United States. And there may be some, but most of them are citizens that are either with us here in Massachusetts or in other states.
Well, it's right to say homeless, shelter, not migrant shelter.
Yeah. Yeah, an emergency, actually is.
So I have to relate an experience with this because I was doing my middle-of-the-night shopping at Hannaford's, which we call not Hannaford's because it's changed names so much. And so I get out of my car, it's about 8:30, right? The other night it was warm. And there's kids playing tag over there. Not it, not it, that, that. I'm like, this is cool. Can I go play? So it certainly was a bright spot. You know, you think that it's not, but it is. So, interesting.
So I do believe we, yes, we do need a vote. So if we don't have any more discussion, then I will make a motion. I mean, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the 23, 24 school year grant awards as listed tonight from our administration.
Second?
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, passes. Thank you. With that, I am going to move on to Mr. Blunkett for the certification of the FY '25 budget.
Madam Chair, we have a full presentation ready to go, but what I would suggest is that we start with the changes since the last presentation. We have been working with the member towns, Air and Shirley, and we've met with our local representatives, state reps. There was, Jamie Eldredge was there, Gronin, Gronin's office.
Gronin's office was also representative. Gronin's office was also representative and...
The gentleman from...
Sina.
Lemister? Sina, Mrs. Sina. So they heard, we pleaded them above the, the grants, the grant funding going down and the S R three, the federal COVID money is going away and really trying to keep these positions in the budget or get them into the general fund budget. So the first slide I'm going to go to is number, page eleven. It's the budget drivers and projections. We had, we have a couple of changes here. So this was in the, in the prior version, the last time we presented. This was about thirteen, the middle section of drivers was about three hundred, one-point-three million. We've lowered it by reducing the amount for the ESER positions. We had seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand there. We've reduced that to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. We think this should probably get us three to five positions. We were thinking probably the behavior specialist and some counseling. We also, as part of this, we would suggest or propose a, a transfer from E and D, once it's certified, to get the rest of those positions in that we wanted. That would get us almost half of the positions that are in S R three right now into the, into the budget. We would suggest a transfer into, from E and D to Choice, and we could move some of our teaching salaries into Choice to make room for a couple more positions from the S R three grant. This way, we could phase it in over a couple of years and do the same thing the following year in twenty-six, probably at a smaller scale, hopefully. But it's something I think the member towns are really glad that we proposed this kind of compromise. And we think it'll, it'll work for our, our budget getting passed at town meetings. So this is the changes, those are the changes on the driver slide.
So we, we do believe, though, between the, the transfer from E and D and the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand line for the ESER funds, as well as some revenue in that we have, we have building rentals, we have a tuition in between using that and hopefully some grants that we, we believe without, without any major changes happening from now until the end, that we would be able to, to get those twelve positions. Not all in the general fund, but be able to get some of those positions into the general fund next year, float these positions for an additional year for services that our kids need, and then try to move some more in the following year. And hopefully through some of our revenue streams in, building rentals, tuitions in, school choice, to, to keep reducing that number until the majority of these positions are in the, in the general fund. But this will be a, what we thought would hopefully be a two, two or three-year process is probably looking like a three-to-five-year process. But we can, I believe we'll, we'll be able to do it as long as there's no huge changes of enrollment between now and, and the end of the, the school year. Is that fair? There will be some, some cuts, and by cuts, that would be a change in positions. But I, we, I don't know if we will have to, though someone's job may change, we probably aren't at this point, as of today, with what we know today, I want to be very clear, have to cut any, any teaching position, any teacher's. A position might change, but we, I don't believe we'll have to cut a teacher, an actual person's job. Does that make sense?
That does.
Did I articulate that? Okay.
Any questions on that?
Yes, Joyce?
So the amount that we were initially considering from E and D was three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand? Excuse me, I'm sorry.
That, that...
Has that number changed?
Along with the two-hundred-and-fifty, we'd give us six-hundred-thousand total. We are, that is something, that's just the near mark that we made so we could get six-hundred-thousand total for those positions.
Yeah, but we didn't vote that?
No.
Yeah.
It's pending the school committee approval.
Right.
And any, any transfer from E and D will not affect the assessment because we'll be transferring it to the general fund and then right into one of our overall funds.
Yeah, instead of cutting something, you're not going to see it on the assessment, right?
Correct.
And, because I don't remember my name. So what is the balance that in E and D, what we have left in E and D?
Right now it's...
And isn't there a recommended percentage for E and D?
Well, can't go over five percent of the, of the operating budget, or you have to add it to the budget.
Correct. Right.
But we're at one-point-one million right now. So we'd be down to eight-hundred-thousand if we took out three-hundred-thousand.
Right. I just couldn't remember the numbers. Thank you.
Right. I'll do a memo. We're going to propose the transfer with all the balances so you can see.
Do we almost have to have that? And I know we are on a deadline here. I understand that I'm not being too bad. That, should we have that in place before we make the final approval on this? Or we can still change this if it goes down?
We can recertify anytime.
We can recertify anytime?
Right. Yes.
We, we are hoping, though, that we can certify tonight because it does need to be certified forty-five days before the first town meeting. And this would be the only opportunity. Just, just make it aware.
Thank you.
So moving on to the next slide, there's no change. This is the governor's aid package. Basically, fifty-three thousand dollars increased to revenues, and they decreased our expenditures by a hundred-and-ninety. So we're about two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand to the good on the revenue. We'll keep an eye on this and keep this updated as we go through the process. The foundation enrollment is where the state starts, or where they set the Chapter Seventy program. I don't know if we spent any time on this at the last presentation, but they take all these classifications of expenditures and they calculate how much the district should be paying for each of these classifications. And then all of our students are across the top or divided into classifications of columns by grade or by special ed or voc ed or English language learners. And we get a grand total of twenty-three million dollars, eight-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand, which is our foundation budget, which equates to fourteen thousand thirty-seven per student. And this is important in the calculation of Chapter Seventy. As we go into the summary, to the left, you see our calculation for Chapter Seventy. Basically, they show what we had last year. They take that foundation budget of twenty-three million and subtract the required local contribution. That's also calculated by the state to get the amount of Chapter Seventy we should have. So at eight-point-one million, that's less than we got last year. So we're a hold harmless district. And we get the minimum aid, which at this point in the process is thirty dollars a student. So we get fifty thousand dollars increased to Chapter Seventy. Now, the top right side is the comparison to last year. And two very important numbers. You can see the foundation enrollment, we're down fourteen students. But the foundation budget is up over three percent.
You're right. It's three-point-ten.
Three-point-one percent increase to the foundation budget. And the next number down, the required local contribution that's set by the state for the member towns to pay is up five-point-six percent. So those are pretty significant increases when you look at a reduction in foundation enrollment of fourteen. The state is pushing out the foundation, foundation budget to correct for health insurance, special ed costs, English language learners and disadvantaged economic students. So it's something that keeps getting pushed every year as they try to correct for it. And it is attributing to the, the overall increases to our budget. I think we looked at this one at the last presentation. This one splits that foundation enrollment between Air and Shirley. For FY25, we've got one-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-eight students, nine-hundred-and-seventy-two from Air, seven-hundred-and-twenty-six from Shirley. That's down fifteen for Shirley, up one for Air. And then they split that fifteen million six-fifty-two by the percentage of their enrollment and what, based on what the towns are, can afford to pay. So they come up with nine-point-seven for Air, nine-point-seven million, and five-point-nine million for Shirley. That's an increase to Air of six-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand, which is pretty significant for an RLC increase. And Shirley, even though they're down fifteen students, they still have an increase, they have an increase of one-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand. So you're probably thinking, how do they calculate that required local contribution? This is Air's contribution. And on the left side, the highlighted number, eleven million, that's the target foundation budget that, or target required local contribution that for Air that the state has calculated based on real estate and income for the town. On the right-hand side, the upper right, that first, starting with row thirteen, they're calculating what Air can afford to pay. So they take last year's required local contribution and they multiply it by the growth factor, which gives you the new required local contribution of ten million five sixty-one. That is not, does not reach the cap of eleven-point-three for the target that they've made. So Air has fallen short of the target. And based on how far they are from the target, they will add a one percent or a two percent increment to get Air closer to the target each year. So Air is having a hundred-thousand-dollar increment added on to their required local contribution of ten million, sorry about that, ten million five hundred and sixty-one thousand for a total required local contribution of ten million six hundred and sixty-two?
Yep.
You got it.
All right. So that's how they calculate the required local contribution. Air gets split between Air Shirley, the district, and also Neshoba Tech based on enrollment. And you can see Air in the bottom sections is FY25 information. Air has ninety percent of the enrollment as compared to Neshoba Tech, which has sixty-three students, is just under nine percent. So they split the required local contribution of ten-point-six million between Air and Neshoba Tech, and it's an increase of six-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand to the town of Air. They actually have a decrease in the foundation enrollment to Neshoba Tech. So that is a decrease of forty-six thousand and offsets a little bit of their increase. So the total increase to Air is six-hundred-and-one-thousand. And Shirley's calculated the same way. Their grand total, they are, they have not reached target either. So they're being, they're having a one percent added increment to their calculated required contribution. So they, they have a total of six-point-five million for their required local contribution. And they allocate the same way between Air Shirley and Neshoba Tech. They're down, Shirley's down fifteen students for, for Air Shirley, and they're up six students in Neshoba Tech. So, but the split is still about the same, ninety, ninety-one to nine percent. They split that six-point-five million over the two districts. Shirley's total increase is two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars. And, and those numbers are all state-set and are not inclusive of our increases that we, we put in for our drivers. So our new totals for the budget, the overall budget, total budget, all funds altogether is thirty-six million, three-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty dollars. And that is a two-point-five percent increase overall from the prior year for all funds. And we roll that to the next page for the assessment. Row one is the actual RLC for Air and Shirley, as set by the state. The second line, line number two, is net school spending above RLC. It's the amount that Air and Shirley contribute above the RLC. Then transportation. Transportation and rows two and three are calculated by the regional agreement, which currently with our foundation enrollment is fifty-seven percent Air, four-three percent to Shirley. And this first subtotal shows just the operating assessment, six-point-five for Air percent and three-point-five percent for Shirley. We add in the debt, and then we have the total percentages of four-point-nine percent overall, six percent to Air, six percent increase, and a three-point-two percent increase to Shirley. And we work very closely with both town managers and present it to the Board of Selectment in both towns and the FinComs. Well, kind of both, both FinComs in town, but we, we met with them to make the same presentations you're seeing here. And we did the last of the hearing, the budget hearing meeting.
We, we didn't get the opportunity to, on Saturday, to let the Shirley FinCom know that there actually was a, a penalty added on to the state by, by being below the required local contribution.
An increment. I wouldn't call it a penalty.
My apologies. Thank you for correcting me. Chances are, even with what we're asking in the, in, for the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand additional dollars in ESER, that increment is probably going to be assessed next year as well.
Can you tell me more about the, what is the target specifically? And why are we getting the one percent increment? What target?
The target is, they look at the town's real estate values, income per capita, and they determine what, what would be a fair foundation budget or a required local contribution for the foundation budget for that specific town. Then to kind of like offset that, they go and they calculate, take your last year's required local contribution and multiply it by a growth factor. That's a D O R. They set all the tax rates. They set the tax levies. So they, they work very closely with the towns in setting those rates. So they know what, what increases they're going to have. So they, they base it on that. And Air was four-point-nine percent growth rate. So that was multiplied by last year's RLC. So that's your new target. I mean, not your target. That's your new required local contribution. And then if you're within, if you're far enough away from the target, they will give you a one or a two percent increment to get closer to the target. So that's like speeding it up, phasing it in, the increases.
Actually, both towns' growth rate, Shirley's was...
Shirley was at one-point-two percent as well. Shirley's was at three-point-two percent, I believe.
Three-point-four?
Up from two-point-eight before, last year.
That's Joyce?
Have we heard back from the towns yet? Are they giving us any direction or plea or threat as to...
We've had absolutely productive meetings with both town managers.
Yeah, I know we have.
And the number that is represented in that ESER line is something that we have been told both towns can, can absolutely live with.
Can do.
So does that mean, because they typically will say if they, if they're supporting, a yes or no?
Our impression is that both towns would be supporting.
For the finance committee as well as...
I, I, I can't speak for the finance committees. I can tell you that our meetings with the town managers have told us that this is a number that is manageable for each town.
So, yeah. General observations from Saturday's review of the Finance Board. Masterful job by Dr. Reina. I've never been to a Finance Review meeting. What will you talk? Almost nothing about members and finances. Amazing and excellent restraint, dealing with members that. Wanted to talk about value instead of cost. You know, trying to have you synopsize improvement plans as we sit here to watch four schools give hour-and-a-half presentations and then your thoughts for the district and how detailed all that is. Try to justify what we're spending without ever talking about what the amount was. But overall, when you go into a review with Finance Board, the less you want to talk about is finances. So it was, could not have been better by aspect. We just eat up the entire time and never got to this page. Never even got to it. So it was absolutely masterful. I was more worried about Charlie. I thought he was going to throw something from the back of the room. The temperature was going up, but absolutely superior job. But it also did point out the fact that they clearly... But it also did point out the fact that they clearly, from the questions they were asking, do not understand, Chapter seventy, aspects of this. Both towns are changing from the median incomes and the cost of the properties, and that's only gonna mean, this thing is gonna continue for quite some time, you know, so the fact that we can come up with these sort of numbers, this is, you know, we've seen those numbers the next couple of years. We continue to like, all right, you're doing a good job managing your towns, and property values are up, and all these things are happening, but that means you're gonna get less and less and less state money, so the burden for increasing to support these things is gonna fall on local contribution. And they, they do not understand that, they absolutely do not get that part, so, you know, we talked before about how school funding works. Now, the finance board in Shirley, I think it's a great time to, I don't know who's on the air right now, but it's a great time to go now, because the chair of the Shirley Committee, Elder Brandt, he's pulled papers for select, right? So everybody else on that board, you know, but they're willing to work, you know, I think just from their questions, they, they want to know more, but we are absolutely gonna have to do that, because they're gonna have to get used to figuring out how this is gonna figure out, because we're not gonna have anywhere to turn, and you're not gonna be able to throw up those kind of numbers two or three years in a row. I mean, sneak away, you know, pull some Peter and Paul stuff here to get through, but in the longer term, you know, our required contribution is gonna be higher, quite a fair amount, but they're gonna need to know that, so they can plan that into whatever else is gonna have to happen.
I completely agree, we've reached out to MARS already, and what I would love to happen is for something like that to happen this fall, September, October. The other thing that, that I'm taking away from Saturday is, is we need to invite both the select boards and the FINCOMs to be audience members during some of the school committee meetings, because there is, there's a lot of detail that we go in. We will certainly start to email them all the minutes, once, once we can get the email addresses. We'll send those out, but when we do the school improvement plans, if they're really interested in the programs that we're running and the effectiveness, when we do the, the accountability presentation, and many of the things that we talk about over and over again, I mean, the, the proper channels to get that information would be during these meetings, so we'll certainly share our agendas with them and suggest that they attend.
Are joint meetings ever something that happens between, like, I know select board will have a joint meeting with FINCOM, has there ever been a joint meeting with the school committee? And the FINCOM?
Because remember, we're a region.
Yes, on all the capital projects.
Okay.
Everybody, FINCOM, Board of Selectmen, and us, on every capital project.
That's a good idea.
I think all we have to do is post, right? We all have to make sure we post, and then we can, we can...
It just seems like maybe we need to be a little more encouraging that the participation happens, it's not happening like voluntarily, so maybe if we had like a joint meeting, it would be a little more effective to communicate, so that you, you shouldn't have to do this presentation, you know, six times in one budget season, so.
Well, Neshoba Tech does it nine times, so.
Well, I mean, who's competing, but I think...
Yeah, no, but I mean, when you're a region, you end up doing to your towns.
Of course, I understand that, but I mean, they've done it to like multiple different committees in one town, so if the towns were to come to our meeting...
I think we should explore that.
That's kind of my, I mean, your time is valuable, is kind of what I'm getting at.
I think we should pick and choose when we do that, for instance, if we're, if, when we present the school improvement plans and some of the initiatives that we're having, I think if an invitation is appropriate, not necessarily a joint meeting, because really that is, that is, that is up to you all, right? You are the school committee to ask the questions and to drive us in a certain direction. But when it comes to finances, we should, we should absolutely look into that, because we, there is no way in a half-hour block, we could have given the information that they're asking for in that meeting, it just, first of all, we didn't know that we were going to be talking about anything other than finances, so we didn't bring a presentation or have the, the information readily available, so I think you make an excellent point, that's something we should, we should look into.
I also wanna highlight, though, the business and nature of a finance committee is that of finance. The value of education sits with the school committee. Sometimes, I think, when we have so many questions, we can get into a rabbit hole a little bit, where we may have a number of questions that if we research a little thoroughly, by simply watching the video, you can get those answers. So again, I think to Jim's point, it is masterful that you are able to come up with that information that you are presenting, week in and week out here, and be able to provide some of it at a finance committee meeting. So as we can be encouraging and come alongside our financial committees, I am more than happy to enroll in the MASC, Chapter seventy, funding education that's provided, so that our FINCOM members can sit alongside us to understand how we finance funding, where it comes from. There's a number of educational sessions that happen throughout the year, and I do believe they do have one around the same time as MARS in September, and so there's a number of opportunities that we could provide, so that as we have those new members that have questions, just like me, I'm, you know, I'm still a new member for school committee, and I have questions for things, you know, coming to those meetings, and also they provide information for you to take away after that, that they would be able to review. It probably would be helpful, so that we kind of can bridge amongst the committees, but at the same time, be mindful about the content of each of the, the content and the purpose of why we do what we do. So we're always gonna have a connection between value, which would be the school committee, and then finance, which would be finance committee, right, for each, each school. So we're more than happy, is the message, to provide education and understanding for anyone truly that wants to know, but especially when we're working alongside our peers, when we're talking about funding and when we're talking about the value. And I'm more than happy to follow up alongside you, so that we can kind of bridge those gaps and lack of knowledge altogether. So it's, it's great, but I do wanna say that that is the feedback that I did get from, from all of you, is not only the masterful approach that you had, the information that you have on hand, but it's because you stay prepared. And I think that that is a key takeaway that we wanna, we wanna highlight here, you stay prepared because you do the work. So I wanna say thank you for that, and I thought I saw Joyce's hand go up, but maybe you didn't.
Following up on what you're saying there, Erica, I think both with AIR and the finance committee was there with the selectmen, and asked some very good pointed financial questions. And historically, when you get someone who's new on these committees, and right now, I was more than impressed with the Shirley committee, because they were totally up with all the information you were giving them already. It was pretty good, overall. I mean, they knew this, they didn't, they weren't picking apart or why we're doing this or anything, so, because we also gave the heads up earlier, that, heads up, guys, this is coming down the road, and that was a very good thing to do.
I agree, I, I do think, though, our transparency may have been misunderstood at one point, because, and just to clarify, we had been, the, the number in the ESSR line was originally, I believe, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, and that number was in there for transparency. At no point did we actually think that the two towns could split a fifty, fifty-eight, forty-two split of seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. We thought that it was important for the select boards, the school committee, and the FINCOM to have an understanding of, this is what it actually costs us to do business with these positions. So it was, it was an attempt at transparency, not an attempt to strong on the town for seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
I think they understood that.
I don't know if everybody did.
Okay.
So we will continue to be transparent when we have the draft of the budget, saying, this is what it costs.
Right.
We know that this number's gonna come down, but this is what it actually does cost, so when grants go away, or the state cuts our funding, this is, and we wanna keep the services that we are providing for our students, and granted, it's not always services, it could be other things, it could be athletics, it could be arts, it could be, it could be whatever. As of right now, it was the additions were for, for mental health and, and social emotional learning, and, and reading recovery. I think it's important to be transparent, and this is what it costs, and here's what we're gonna do to get to that number, both the school district and the, and the towns.
Hearing the other...
And working with, with, with Robert and, and Mike is, they're, they're great to work with.
Right. So, and having talked to a couple of other towns in, around where I am most of the day, they're having huge overrides and stuff, and they're being fought viciously. So this is nothing, this is great.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna highlight again, Adam, we've been transparent since November. We've been transparent, our intention has been transparent, we have provided education, it is there, as I was taught very young. Reading is fundamental, but it is not fundamental to read, it's your choice. So with that being said, I'm gonna take that advice and make sure that I also am educating myself when it comes to our peer organizations, but I do wanna highlight, as much as I know that you wanna be honest and transparent, we've been honest and transparent since November. So all they had to do was watch the video and understand that. And my hope is that this will be a vehicle for unity, for understanding, for knowledge, so that we can stand together and understand a little bit better, not saying that there's dissension, but you can always have a lesson learned, right? But again, great job, all of you, thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay. So I believe we do need to certify the budget, so we need, do we need a vote? I'm sorry, okay, thank you. So I will entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion that we certify the fiscal year twenty-five budget as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're moving forward, it has been certified.
Madam Chair, we, last year, I checked what we did in the minutes.
Yes.
And we just mentioned that last number, total of all funds, because if we recertify with a transfer from E and D, that will change, but the assessment will not.
Okay, so you need to have an approval with that final number?
With the total of all funds of thirty-six million, three hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety, four hundred and ninety or ninety?
Four hundred and eighty.
Four eighty.
I have never been so grateful to be chair. You got this.
Let's try this again. Okay, I'd make a motion that we certify the fiscal year twenty-five budget of thirty-six million, three hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right, it is now certified correctly, thank you.
Thank you.
Learning opportunity. All right, so we will move on to our draft for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year calendar, Dr. Brenda.
So this is a, a draft draft, but there are some things that I think are very important that I, that we wanted to bring up, because there's some changes. We're not ready to really present the entire calendar, for a couple of reasons. One is ASRIA is still going to come and do a joint presentation with me at the school committee about why we believe we should move to one conference day a year for each building, and move to more on-demand conferences, meaning students will, will have specific drivers, where a teacher will reach out to a parent for a conference, because there is a, a specific need for that. I know ASRIA believes that we are just about there for an agreement, this is something the school committee would vote on, which would change some of these other dates. But really what I, I wanna present today in the draft, and this is a big one, is we are looking at asking the school committee to consider having us start on August twenty-third, that is a Friday. And the reason, and if you notice, we typically have two school days before school starts. So in that would be convocation, some classroom time, and then a day of PD. That's not enough, we don't have enough time in the beginning of the year, at least for next year, to get everything done that we need to get done. So here's the ask, we currently have one hundred and eighty-one student days of school. We are asking that next year, a school committee considers to have one hundred and eighty days, and that we take a day and put it on that Friday, the twenty-third, this would allow us to have, teachers have a full day setting up their classrooms, which has been an ask every year in every district since I can remember. It would also allow us to then have two full days of PD. One of the things that we learned from the, the coffee with cabinet, so it's not coffee with the superintendent anymore, it's coffee with cabinet, I bring, bring all my friends with me, but one of the themes was that teachers are asking for professional development and dealing with trauma. And we have provided a ton of social, emotional, professional development these past two and a half years. One of the glaring omissions is trauma-informed instruction and, and trauma-informed schooling. So that's one of the things that we want to do. I know that's, that's a big ask, we, we feel that it will really, really help teachers, having that full day in a classroom as a former teacher would be a huge help to them. Having the two full days of PD will help get us ready to open up the buildings. The other thing that it would allow us to do, is it would allow us to keep the last day of school on June thirteenth, while still not having school the day before Thanksgiving. I know that we had mentioned that before, I'm not sure the school committee's appetite to that, but just, just to give you a little bit of data, our current average daily attendance is ninety-four percent, pretty good. On the day before Thanksgiving, this past year, it was eighty-four percent, in twenty-twenty-two is eighty-five percent, twenty-twenty-one, not too bad at eighty-eight. So it is, it is a day that many parents are choosing not to send kids to school anyway. I should have ran staff attendance, that slipped my mind, but I would imagine the staff attendance is probably a little bit worse on that day than it typically is also. Those are really the two big, the major changes that we're kind of ready to present. Some of the thing, other things that are going to change, depending if we can go to the one conference day and on-demand conferences, that would change some of the early release days that we have on there, because they would no longer be needed. And then we could, we would consider moving others because of MCAS testing, but we are not quite ready to, to make those changes on that. But any questions about the moving from the one eighty-one to the one eighty, the full day of classroom setup in the PD, two days before school, or the day off before Thanksgiving? I'm happy to entertain any questions or concerns.
Yeah, just kind of an initial question, and I've been asked this by several parents, why do we go back for two days and then have a four-day weekend? Because it's a nightmare for parents that work, like it's, there's no camps open, it's, it's just really, really challenging for working parents. So seeing that extra day, could you move that to like the week before, and then could we finagle it where we start after Labor Day, or is that just absolutely out of question? Because I know some school districts do start after Labor Day.
Do we have, I'm gonna have to check, I should, I should know this, but I don't. Do we have in the contract that we have to start before Labor Day?
No.
We don't.
We don't.
We could absolutely look at that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I don't know anyone else's opinion on it, I just know...
I think it's a good idea.
Every year, it's like, two days and then a day off, and it's like, but why?
Right, that's a good idea.
And that's just coming from a parent of tiny humans, like I know everyone else probably doesn't feel that way, but it's, it's hard.
I've been there, yep, I get that, yes, Joyce?
I used to get my soapbox out and preach against that, those days before Labor Day.
Yeah, that random day off.
I used to get my soapbox out and preach on those days before Labor Day, because that was the only time I could take my, I could go on vacation, and enough staff that I and my kids could go on vacation, and I thought one of my kids was gonna have a heart attack one year, because he missed that day, but, so, I agree.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, it's...
I don't know why we started doing that, really, if you want to know.
I think it's something that many, many districts do, certainly, we, we do get input from ASRIA, that we don't, and that's all it is, is input, the, the calendar is completely the, the up to the school committee to vote on.
That works out fine now, because Labor Day's the second, we go through this every single year, but when Labor Day's the seventh, it doesn't work so good, so you can't really pick the Labor Day thing, but right now, I think, by making that change for this year, it'll be fine, as long as everybody recognizes that when Labor Day falls later, that's not gonna be possible unless you wanna be here June twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
Like, it looks like you'll be able to work that around that for this year, but I just don't wanna set an expectation for every year that we'll be able to do it, because we certainly will.
Yeah, that makes sense, and I would, I would say, even if, obviously, after Labor Day would be, you know, preferred, but even just to get rid of that Friday, like I, I didn't know if that Friday was meant for the teachers, for some kind of professional development, or what that Friday was.
It's, it's not, no, that's a non-ARC day for, for teachers. It's, it's not. No, that's a non-ork day for, for teachers. There are many teachers in their, in their rooms on that day. But no, we don't hold any professional development.
Okay.
So, we.
I know that would, I mean, with the one hundred eighty days, I mean, like you're getting that day anyways. I don't know where that would put it, in June and then with the Juneteenth holiday. I know that might be tough, especially like Jim said, with the late Labor Day, but.
But June 13th, it's often easy to get, early to get out of school.
Yeah, we're at least good this year. We'll just review it annually, but I think it's still a very good idea.
Well, if we, if, if we simply had school that day, that would change the last day of school to Thursday, June 12th, which would actually give us a buffer if there was only one snow day.
Well, the way snow's going now, we might not have any.
I don't like mentioning snow days lately after that last one, so.
It's a nice day off.
Jim, you're into Pittsburgh. Everybody wants to go, man.
That was a terrible call.
No, I think you were perfectly right because the last prediction was heavy, heavy snow at two o'clock, which means all the buses would have been trapped out there with bad snow.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate you softening that for me. But sometimes you get it wrong, and that's okay. So, yeah, we'll, let, so we're going to bring that back and get some input from ASRIA. But we will, and, and we will figure out when we can present to you with them about the on-demand conferences and moving to the one conference because that will have a lot of implications to the schedule. But any other questions, and a great suggestion, any other questions about the full day in the classroom or the, the day off before Thanksgiving? And that is something that really is coming. Many staff would appreciate that. And we did get some feedback from parents who would also prefer to have it off. I would have to say it was, we had more feedback from staff on that than, than parents, but there were parents who are interested in not having the day before Thanksgiving against the school day.
Well, you're in discussing, but that's just float out there, December 30, 31. I mean, the Christmas is on a Wednesday, so you have an entire week out. And, you know, New Year's Day is not the biggest celebration, especially if you have kids anyway. So, we might be able to sneak a couple of days there. If you had to steal some days to shorten up some things. Just float by the teachers, just see what they think of that.
That's a big vacation week, a travel week for a lot of families in between, in between those holidays.
You may offer us an opportunity that way where we have the entire week before off. We don't have to worry about early release for Christmas and stuff. Christmas is, again, is in the middle of the week.
We can absolutely bring that up to them.
The one observation that I would like to make is I'm, I'm grateful for the astuteness of our teachers, particularly when it comes to trauma-informed teaching care. It is definitely, I don't want to say a new endeavor, but it's probably more widely heard of now. It's even an effort that hospitals are taking when, let's say in the emergency room, when you're simply coming up for another disruption issue. Having certain questions on hand or questionnaires can really affect a child's school day at a very basic level, and I'm really excited to hear about that. I know for myself, and I have freestanding inpatient psychiatric care, which is a little bit different. So, we're not attached to a medical facility. It's solely psychiatric care. And that's one of the endeavors that we're actively, you know, really trying to dig into. And some of the just small efforts that we've made in education and as far as interaction with our patients, and we do have children who start at age three and go all the way up to geriatric. It can completely change how the, the children react to their stay. One, it's scary because they're on a locked unit, right? But two, even in the classroom setting when they hit, I think it's the two-week mark, it can make a huge amount of difference for what they are taking in. So, I really want to commend the staff and you all as well, trying to provide professional development at a very basic level to assist the kids because that's, that's huge.
So, there was a lot of great information shared at Coffee with Cabinet. Some, you know, some of it was, was hard to hear, right? But it's like with anything else, your choice is to listen, hear it, try to do something about it or pretend it doesn't exist. But I would have to say all staffs, the turnouts at, at some schools, of course, were greater than others, but people came ready to share and give some kind, sometimes critical feedback. And, and the trauma issue came up at a couple of different schools. I think we're going to schedule the next one for the end of this month, if I'm correct, Michelle. So, one thing we will do is throw invites to school committee. If you want to show up, we'll probably do first come, first served. So, there's no, if you want to attend, not show, excuse me, not show up. So, there's not a quorum, but it was, you know, we got a lot of, a lot of good information. And we're going to do two more. We're going to do one towards the end of this month, maybe some at the beginning of April. And then towards the end of May and beginning of June, getting ready for next year.
All right.
And that is, that is it for the calendar.
Okay. So, for ongoing business, we have none. And for chairperson's notes, I, I kind of already said it, and I, I just want to reiterate that as our, our opportunities arise to encourage our peers in different committees, we are going to try and make the effort. I know, again, myself, I'll be looking for the, the mask emails. I know one, I think, just came out today that had some upcoming classes that'll be informational. I'm not sure if they were virtual because I didn't get in-depth in the details. But we can always, you know, bring along our peers and, and look to have some more unity and comprehensive understanding and spending as well. And that was pretty much it. So, I am going to move on to other topics for discussion, not reasonably anticipated forty-eight hours in advance of this meeting. Do we have any?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Superintendent?
I sure did. I'm messing up today. I'm sorry, you guys. I promise I can read. Like I said, reading's fundamental, but you don't have to fundamentally read. So, go right on ahead.
It's a quick one. So, we have, we have three updates for you. At our Fall Lash Learns Professional Development Day, Ms. Amy Doyle, who you've met, she's been to a couple of school committee meetings of our middle school, she's the middle school technology teacher, presented about the use of video games in classrooms. She took the feedback she received and developed into a presentation called Gamification in and out of the classroom. This further-developed presentation speaks to the psychology of learning through play and how video games can increase engagement and accessibility in the classroom and the positive impact an esports team can have on a school community. Ms. Doyle has been asked to present at the PAX East 2024 on March 21st at the Boston Convention Center. If you aren't familiar with PAX, it's the largest video game convention on the East Coast and one of the largest in the country. There will be over seven hundred and fifty gaming companies in attendance, as well as a crowd of over a hundred and thirty thousand guests. Ms. Doyle says that she would not have been able to accomplish this without the amazing support of our district and that she is honored to represent the Air Shirley Regional School District in such a major event. It's fantastic. We also want to congratulate our Andromeda One High School Robotics Team, whose Biltoven robot made it to playoffs and won the event's Most Prestigious Impact Award at the Granite State Competition in Salem, New Hampshire last weekend. The team automatically qualified for the New England Championship Competition, April 4th through 6th in West Springfield, Massachusetts. They're also hosting an event, I believe, this Saturday at the high school in open house. Well, that will be on the announcements. So, before I say anything wrong, we'll wait until the announcements go down. Also, I, some parents have reached out to me with some concern with the, the cost increase in the summer extended day program, working with Mrs. Higgins to try to bring that cost down if possible. So, we're, we're looking at possibly utilizing some of the extended day grant money that we had received for last year and this year to help bring down that cost if we can. Some of the, the factors of the cost of our program, especially if you compare it to some of the other programs, Summer in Shirley, for instance, is our transportation contracts. But I think probably what it is, and I am making an assumption here, but we are going to try to find out, are the salaries. So, where, we have contracts with teachers and parent professionals and others while a lot of other summer programs and camps are able to hire college students who are coming back on break. And I, I don't know for sure that's who works in Summer in Shirley, which is a wonderful program. But we are kind of obligated by contracts to, to pay a certain amount. So, we're going to try to do that right now. That cost is about eighteen dollars a day difference per, per child. We're going to see if we can get that a little bit closer. We will keep the school committee updated as we determine if we can actually reduce that cost for families. But it's something that we will absolutely look at, and I appreciate the families who have reached out. Any questions on that?
Do you have a feeling or an idea? How many, how many kids are we having, having that program? And is there an age bracket?
Well, it's elementary.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's mostly, it's mostly kindergarten through, through fifth grade. There are some sixth graders, but there, there are others in there. I don't, I, I believe we had close to forty campers last year.
I wouldn't want to guess. I think it's more than that.
Let me, let me get that exact number to you.
Just so we understand the whole program.
I will include that in the email that I'm sending out about the number of students we have who live. But that, that forty is a guess. So, erase that. I'll get you the actual number that we had attend last year.
They'll put that in the minutes.
Any other questions?
Yeah, for that program in the past, this was a few summers ago, but they did have college students. Are they having a hard time getting like the high school college students to come back or? Because in the past, that was like the majority of the staff, especially for field trip days, for example.
I'm going to have to look into that. Actually, what I can do is have Mrs. Higgins come to one of the future meetings and, and give you the, the actual, because if, I would be guessing at that. But I do believe we still have many of our staff that work during the year that work in that program. I, I could be mistaken. I will check into that.
I think some of them, from my recollection, some did, some didn't, you know, if they wanted the summer hours. Some didn't so much want to work all summer, you know, I don't blame them, but.
I can see, I can see them wanting to recharge that battery, certainly. Let me get that information and have her, her come and present, present that to you.
Thank you.
So, I understand that's it.
I'm sorry?
Just so it can understand.
Yeah. And if we can bring, if we can bring down that cost, we absolutely will. So, we have some updated college acceptances. So, we have the Massachusetts College of Pharmacy and Health Sciences.
That's cool.
Temple University. I don't know if I read Temple before. That's, that might be a new one. Stonehill College, University of Massachusetts, Boston, Wentworth Institute of Technology, and Worcester Polytech Institute. And that is all for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Adam. Okay. So, I'm going to jump down to communications. I read it. It was communications. I promise I read it.
Did we check if there was any other topics for discussion?
I, you know what? We swapped on over to superintendent's report.
Okay, announcements for March 4th, 2024. On Thursday, March 7th, and Monday, March 11th, office hours for Ms. Erica Span, school committee chairperson. Six to eight PM. Location is remote. On Tuesday, March 12th, the Air Shirley PTO meeting at seven PM, middle school library. On Wednesday, March 13th, Air Shirley Education Foundation meeting, seven PM, high school media center. Thursday, March 14th, ninety-minute early release, preschool through twelve, late start preschool and professional development for teachers. Lunch will be served, dismissal times for high school, middle school at twelve fifty PM, Laurel Lake White, Page Hilltop at one forty-five PM. On Thursday, March 14th, and Monday, March 18th, office hours for Ms. Erica Span, school committee chairperson, six to eight PM, remote. On Wednesday, March 20, ninety-minute early release, preschool through twelve, late start preschool, professional development for, for teachers. Lunch will be served, dismissal times for high school, middle school at twelve fifty PM, Laurel Lake White and Page Hilltop at one forty-five PM. On Thursday, March 21, and Monday, March 25, office hours for Ms. Erica Span, school committee chairperson, six to eight PM, remote location. Wednesday, March 27, two-hour early release, grades preschool through five for conferences. Lunch will be served. Dismissal time is one fifteen PM. And Wednesday, March 27, school committee meeting, six thirty PM, middle school library. Again, Wednesday, March 27, Special Education Parent Advisory Council meeting at six thirty PM in the middle school classroom, one forty-two. And Thursday, March 28, two-hour early release, grades preschool through five for conferences. Lunch will be served, dismissal time is one fifteen PM. And Thursday, March 28, office hours for Ms. Erica Span, school committee chairperson, six to eight PM, remote.
We had two announcements.
Yes.
And Andromeda One is one of the, we got the fundraiser information. So, they're, they have a Chipotle fundraiser at 252 Mill Street in Lemonster. That's this Wednesday, March 6th, from five to nine. Twenty-five percent of the proceeds will go to Andromeda One. And March 9th, this Saturday, there's a community open house here at the high school from 10 AM to 11 AM. Again, for Andromeda One.
We're having Chipotle tomorrow, and I don't have to cook. So, I appreciate you, Andromeda One. Thank you.
And the food at the point, I've forgotten the name of the restaurant, that had, that gave the fundraiser.
Anthony's?
Anthony's, Stonefire Pizza, whatever. It was good.
Okay. So, we do not have executive session, so I will.
Can I give a?
Depending on season, Charlotte, the, the boys' basketball team came from eighteen, in the playoffs, came from eighteen points down in the third period to take a lead with forty seconds left. And they, somebody sank a three-point into the other team. We had our final look at the basket. We didn't go in with a superior effort on a much higher-ranked opponent, really, coming back from that. Girls won their first playoff game at home, but they hosted here against Blacksville Millville. And then if you're ever looking, feeling the need to do penance, drive to Cohasset on a Friday afternoon. That will certainly fulfill that. They, they met their, their match in Cohasset in the event of the other season. It's always, no matter when the season ends, telling something to watch the seniors because for many of the seniors, this is their last game that they're ever going to play in this football game. It's always something to watch and for have, to have both of the teams make the playoffs this year and show that kind of success. It was amazing, really amazing.
Thank you, Jim.
Well, then I have to do a shout-out for my nephew. My bad uncle. Cole New plays second in all of New England for the Indoor 600.
Awesome.
Track New England's.
Awesome.
And the boys' track team, Cole is participating in the individual 400, but then the four-by-four-hundred team is going to be running in Nationals this weekend. And also the sprints, middle relay team, boys, are going to be competing in Nationals this weekend as well.
Is that the market split?
It's split this year. It's usually, it's been at the New Balance, but there's also the College Worlds going on at New Balance. So, the first two days are at Reggie Lewis Arena, but then the final two days, I think, are back at the New Balance, the track. Right off of the Pike, yep. At the New Balance, yeah, headquarters.
Kids are doing great, and I'm glad to hear it. I'm really glad. Okay. So, I'm going to entertain a motion for.
I'd make a motion that we adjourn at eight twenty-five.
Second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned.